This conference will now be recorded.
Sorry.
I'll call to order the June 3, 2024 regular council meeting to order at 7:01 PM. I'll rise for the pleasure, ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah.
I picked up what she was putting out.
Any additions or corrections to city agenda?
I have a correction. There was a miscommunication with the Parks Committee and Stephanie, they let her believe they wanted the healthy parks to be passed in July, they want to present in July, so we will not be having them here tonight.
Okay, so I suppose when we get down to new business, we can discuss that.
Well, there's nothing, they don't have a presentation. They're coming to present.
Scratch that, delete that from tonight.
Yeah, table it to the July, the meeting in July.
Hey, anything else? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to the accept the agenda without one deletion in the new business?
Remove, Mr. Mayor.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Webb, is there a second?
A second, though.
Second by Councilwoman Wagner.
Councilwoman Norman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wagner?
Aye.
Mayor Holbert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ash?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Any presentations tonight? None? I do not have any mayor's report, so any council committee meeting reports tonight? Go ahead, Dale.
I met with Public Works Committee. Me, um, they're moving forward the sidewalks plan to council. I don't know if you've received it yet or not.
I.
Figured of.
I don't think we have.
Okay. They voted to move it to council anyhow. Ben came to our meeting. The committee, we talked briefly with him about the streets plan. Where he was at on that, and he's gonna, next couple of months, he'll be.
The streets inventory?
Yes.
Like a new, yeah, okay.
Kind of getting an idea where we're at. And then he also came to us. Evidently, staff internally has had their own debates on this. We derive a certain amount of off our gas tax money that we receive and what's left over out of the expenses, and we are free to use that and usually do for paving projects, but we need to kind of come up with a game plan of what makes most sense for us, how to use that cash money, basically. You know, tagging it on to regular SCA projects, or holding it back and getting the skin in the game for a bigger grant-funded project, and we'd be talking like State Street or Knott Street or something. And then we also have the aspects of eventually, ODOT's gonna push back and say we're not gonna pave certain streets in your town, so at that time, maybe that's, we gotta hold back for those projects so we can do those. So it's basically coming up with a strategy of what best serves the community with that limited resource and determining, you know, the best outcomes, so.
And we don't have, so we would put it like a facilities reserve type thing, so that if it needed to come out for a project, it could, but every year planned to put so much of it away if council has a policy on that?
Instead of putting it under contract service.
Instead of just dropping it all there, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll have to come up with some type of strategy. They wanted us to kind of flesh that out and then bring it to council and kind of adopt the policy, I guess.
Dale, how much income does generate that gas stack?
Well, Ben kept saying 70 grand a year, but I don't know if it's that much.
We put 60 in contracts, so the amount that comes in pays for all the things in streets, right? So that could be fuel, that could be, but the amount we've regularly had in contract services around 60. So whether or not we just, if we're not paving in a year, that 60 could go into a reserve, and then the next year, it, along with the grant and the other 60, could bolster a project by 120 grand. So that's kind of what we've been thinking, instead of just bleeding it out really small. It kind of worked for us this year with the money that we held in there from being paid, doing the work for ODOT's ramp and then getting paid in the other fiscal year, we held on to that money, which is now allowing us to finish pretty much all of the marginal streets in some sort of resurfacing this year by holding that money, but.
Yeah. And like you said, there's, I haven't seen it yet, but it sounds like there is, ODOT does bigger grant-funded projects, but you gotta have, like you say, the engineering's gotta be done, you gotta have some skin in the game.
Yeah.
So.
And those.
You know.
Big arterial streets like State or Knott would be, need one of those.
Yeah, because I mean.
Yeah.
State Street's gonna be, that's gonna be a big project.
Yeah, and when you start doing sidewalks, curb and gutter, seeing the catch basins that are too low or obsolete now.
Okay, that's it, Dale. Thank you.
Parks Committee met, yep. So the two main things they have are the healthy parks, which they're planning to come present at the first meeting in July, and then the Anderson Park rate increase, which we are gonna discuss tonight. And so the Tigert's both came to that meeting and Josette, they all kind of hashed out together what made sense for the rate changes. The big issue, we'll go into it, but the big issue being the extended stay is using a lot of electricity, and they don't actually pay for anything for that. And then they are hoping to find out, which I think Josette's still digging into, was the reasoning why when we raised the park rates last year, we raised, you know, the citizen rates and the annual passes, but we didn't raise the day rate, and so they were wondering.
Daily parking.
The daily $5 days rate. And I feel like I know there was a reason we discussed, but none of us can remember what that reason was.
We're gonna, I have it on my list to search the minutes, because, but I didn't get to it today.
If I remember right, it's because it was already competitive with other places.
That's what I.
Typically have a five instead of, you know, five and two ones or one, so it's still competitive with other places.
But we're gonna find the minutes so that we can say, here's why. But I knew it was something.
Yeah.
Because the extra camping site did go to, an extra car when you're camping with us did go to seven, but the daily parking fee stayed five.
I think it's been seven since I've been here.
The extra.
Still pay it. I'm pretty positive.
Well, I thought it matched at one point. I think it was five and five, and then it went up to seven, but then we didn't mess with the other ones, so that's what we gotta figure out.
Yeah.
We'll figure it out.
Um, that was it.
Okay. Any other committee meeting reports? Okay. Any topics on the floor tonight? No. Cassette Agenda for Acceptance, Parks Committee meeting minutes for April 2024, Public Works meeting minutes for April 2024. Any discussion or questions on those two meetings? Okay, anyone want to move to accept the Agenda for Acceptance?
I'll move to accept the consent Agenda for Acceptance for Parks Committee and Public Works Committee, April 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Norman.
Councilwoman Webb?
Aye.
Mayor Holbert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wagner?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ash?
Aye.
Councilwoman Norman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Cassette Agenda for Approval, City Council Meeting Minutes for May 20, 2024. Any discussion or corrections or questions? If not, anyone would like to make a motion?
I'll move to accept the consent Agenda for Approval.
Motion's been accepted or made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Ash.
Mayor Holbert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ash?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wagner?
Aye.
Councilwoman Norman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Webb?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Any unfinished business tonight? No, move right along to new business. Staff report 2024, 2025 utility rates. And Ben, I guess, wanted to be here to help us with this part of the meeting, but he was not able to make it tonight, so. If you have any questions or for him or staff, then you can direct them in via an email, I guess.
Yeah, unless it's something about it, Dale knows a lot about, too.
Yeah. I did come down and talk to Ben about some of the numbers, but I'm, you know, not, just because our budget numbers were kind of opposite of how the rates went, but it was due to carryover factors, so.
Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So this will be adopted as part of the master fee schedule when you adopt the budget?
No.
Done separately?
It's done separate. Any fees that happen, it's anytime after July 1.
Okay.
Right? You can, we re-up the master fee with these new rates.
Right, okay.
So they end up going on the July.
So last year, we did it at the last meeting in June to be effective July 1st.
Yeah.
Okay.
The master fee schedule.
Which would be the same time as you're adopting the budget?
Yeah, it can be, it doesn't have to be, it just has to be separate because the master fee is its own resolution.
Gotcha.
Yeah. And then.
It also be July.
Yeah, it could be July, too. It's just, we try to change them just one time a year.
Right.
The fees on there.
Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Dale, do you want to, Emmy Fox, anything on this?
Well, I mean, you can just kind of see there on that first page where the rate landed, it's like water consumption, or water base fee, it's gonna go up 15 cents. The water consumption's going off 5 cents.
Going down.
Going down, yeah. Water loan stays the same. Sewer base is going up $2.70. That was, like I said, that was basically kind of the carryover numbers that influenced that. And the sewer consumption, that's going up 40 cents. We've been noticing a trend for years. The, you know, he does his winter time average, and then that's extrapolating, you pay that through the 12 months, everybody, and that total amount has been constantly going on a decline, which is, we're both a little buffaloed by that apple. We were talking about this year, and it was like, but you know, sometime that's gonna come to an end, it's got to, I don't know.
You can only conserve so much and then revert away from the conservation.
So it's been kind of interesting. I think on the sewer loan, let's see, it's going, it's going down a little bit.
35 cents?
Yeah. So a little here.
Is that because of the lowering the interest rate?
No, it's just because of where we are in the amortization, we're starting to, our payments are not as much as.
Last year.
I have a question. The water loan is a flat amount, right?
The payment per year?
Well.
Or per customer? Yeah.
We charge.
Per month?
Because on page seven, it says the current rate is 730, like no change, but on page eight, it's got 695 for the current rate.
Fair.
So is it going up 35 cents or business things?
Um, well, let me pull up my bill, hold on. I don't pay attention to that.
695 over here.
730 here, but 695 here.
Oh, it says the current is 695. Yeah, you know, I think you're right.
So is it going up? Is it wrong here or is it wrong there and it's staying the same?
I think it's going, it's going up.
Hold on.
Going here, it's 695 also.
Yeah.
So that's also going up 35 cents then.
And that one, that was the one last year, and it's easy to forget these things, we took a, what was, one of them, we come up short on.
Yeah. One under.
We didn't.
We didn't mess with it.
Well, we didn't take the current carryover for one year, remember that? And that we're one year behind now. We were going off, not a projected number, but an actual number.
Oh, okay. Let me.
One of them had to get backfilled a little bit. See, where was this sewer number? Oh, the same thing with the sewer number.
What?
Consumption.
What do you mean?
Oh. Oh, this is, this is for an average.
Right, because that's not a fixed rate, but the water loan is.
That is off of an average person, that's what an average person's bill.
Three-quarter inch.
Yeah, that's what that is.
Yeah. But it's still 695.
That way?
It's 695.
That's correct. That'd be correct.
The loan's correct in that, it's 695.
So it just, on page seven, should say 695.
It sure does say 695.
Yes.
That's all.
It's per meter multiplier.
Can I ask?
Yeah.
Try that again, so in the proposed rate change for water loan rate will change from 695 to 730.
Yeah, so it'll go up 35 cents.
Which is reflected correctly on page eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, and down in the calculator section, it's in the correct format.
Any other discussion or questions?
What do you need?
Anything?
Just for information. We'll bring it back for adoption.
Just informational, yeah.
And, and he did, does kind of preface here that these are the numbers based on the cash carryforward totals that were in the budget document. Come June 30th, what's really there will go into the calculator, and it may make, if we have more money in there, it'll make the bills lower, right? If we have less than what we anticipated in the budget, it'll make them a little bit higher, but that'll all come to you in the master fee schedule, and we'll explain that.
And that'll be July 1st?
That's the, I think we're gonna end up doing. I think it's.
It's either gonna be June 17th or July.
The second one. 15th? I think it's the 15th.
It'll depend on the check runs for the June 20 pay period.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, because we don't want to do it before. Yeah, carryforward, but not the middle.
Might, no, she might not.
Right.
Right, thank you.
Interesting.
So Scott, it might be first meeting in July.
It might not, though, depending.
Yeah.
I wouldn't say anything too definitive.
Yeah. They're not sure when they're gonna.
With the master fee schedule, which is separate from the adoption of the budget.
Yes.
But I'm.
Okay.
And one thing Ben did mention, too, for, you know, it is a rate hike. It's gonna be over three bucks a month or better for people to see, but when you take into consideration how much inflation has increased last year.
Three bucks is still a pretty good deal.
That range real easily there, so. We don't make water for free.
Right.
Anymore.
Just signed a pretty good check for chemicals.
Yeah. It's not easy or cheap to make clean water.
Okay, new business B, Parks Committee recommendation for Anderson Park rate increase.
So Brittany, Jeff and I attended the Parks meeting. One of the issues we're having is the electricity for Anderson Park in a given month is about $2,000. A huge amount of that is not the bathrooms, it's, it's the extended stay people, and especially in cold or warm weather, and in almost every other place they stay as a contract worker, they are required to pay their electricity. So that's what we came to talk to Parks about was, first up, was electricity. And Brittany and Jeff have a meter on their trailer, so they ran some like regular days, like a standard day, and see what it is per day, and it was about $7 in kilowatt hours usage. So they also called a lot of the other places where these guys stay, and typically, if you're plugged into a 30 amp service, you pay $150 a month in electricity, and if you're plugged into a 50 amp service, meaning you could run two air conditioners, all the things, that would be $200 per month. Neither of these rates exist in the master fee schedule, so the staff has no way to collect that money, so that's what we're proposing, is that these be new line items in the master fee schedule. The other thing that, so by adding that in, that covers one cost, we're still a heck of a deal in comparison to other private parks that the contractors stay in, and so we're proposing that the nightly full hookup rate go from $30 to 35, which is still in line with parks in our area, Stub, different ones. Stub even has one, if you're an out-of-state person, you even pay more if you're not an Oregon resident. So there's like other ways they make their money. If we do raise that, then we would want to increase the extended stay monthly fee from 800 to 900. And then they wanted to change the tent camping from 20 to 22. And that wouldn't be at every park, because it has shower, it has amenities that other parks don't. Maybe when the lake gets fully built and has showers and a restroom, you would, they would match, but like primitive at the lake or airport, the facilities just aren't there to charge the higher rate.
So be a little more clear on this extended stay.
Mm-hmm. Who those people are?
Well, you have a 30 amp, are we gonna charge an extra 150 on top of the 900? Okay.
Because in most places.
It would be 1100.
Yeah, in most places, before they even pay electricity, they're paying $1,200 a month. So we thought we were still a deal for being off the beaten path, but a lot of them like it, because it's just, if they can get in here for their season at Intel or whatever, it's just peaceful, there's not a lot of, it's well-secured, people are around, so they said if I would let them turn the whole park into extended stay, they could fill every spot, they have a list, so when one person moves in, they call the next person on the list. There's just not very many places out there allowing contract workers, and we limit in the summer, so this season now, we limit, we shrink down how many we allow so that the recreational camping has the majority, and then in the winter, we let them get a little bit more spots.
So if they're plugged into a 30 amp service, then they'd be charged $1,050, correct?
Yeah. Yeah.
In a 50 amp, it'd be 1100? Okay. Yeah, I was a little confused on that, too.
Yeah, that helps clarify.
Yeah, it's weird, because it's, how it is in the master fee is individual lines, it's not like this package, right? If that makes sense, so that's why it's broken down here in the lines where they would go.
Dale?
So just some clarification, so I know a few years ago, when the extended stay was raised, and it was because of the electricity usage, I remember when we jumped that up, but. Do we have 50 amp services down there?
Yeah, we have people that plug into them, yeah.
Because I thought we were gonna have to do upgrades to all our electrical.
No, the upgrade to all 50, having both options at every site, is if we were gonna increase and go where the old playground was with new sites, we would, part of that project is we'd pull new line, so that there was the option at every site that you could be a 50.
Oh, okay.
But we don't, yeah, that project's kind of on the shelf.
And the Tigert's, I believe, have a 50, and they ran like a test.
Yeah.
You know, just using their normal amount, trying to be lean and on a pretty average type of day to see what the cost was, and it was.
210 bucks a month, that's seven bucks.
Yeah, but theirs is like the biggest trailer you'd have there, right? I mean, it's full-on slide outs and long, and it's a big one.
And they're using more than I use in my home, so.
It's a good deal, because I have my trailer.
Oh, yeah.
And it's new, and it's plugged in in the winter with the fridge and freezer on, not being opened, and one plug-in heater set to 45 or 40, depending, and it's over $200 a month.
Yeah.
Nobody's going in and out, nobody's using anything, no lights, it's two things, and it's over $200, and I know it because it's on a separate meter, so it's still a screaming deal.
Yeah.
Plus, they have three kids.
They do.
Yeah.
And I think that's the thing, the contract workers, they're, a lot of them are just couples, so like, they're not there a lot of the hours, right? But they're fully there in the evening with the TV and the food and the, you know, having, living life. Just see how it goes, see if it starts to cover the bill, gee.
When did we last up the charge? I mean, when, how long has it been, $800?
Oh.
Do you remember?
Five years at least.
Has it been that long?
Yeah. We haven't, we haven't updated from the time when we were kind of stopping the month to month and going specific to contract workers with a letter from their supervisor and an end date. Because we kind of, for a run there, we had a whole bunch of month to months and bad debt, if that makes sense. So if you guys are okay with this, we'll prepare it as part of the, if there's concurrence, because we'll bring it to you, you'll have to vote on it in the master fee schedule anyway.
Okay.
But if there's no big pushback, then we'll bring that to you.
General consensus.
For the master fee schedule? Just kidding, thanks for that.
It will either be the July 1st meeting, Scott, or the second one.
Have a general consensus from the council to have staff move forward into the master fee schedule with the.
I'm good with it.
Everyone good with it?
Any not good with it?
Oh, it is a good deal, so I'll go for it.
Okay. Looks like we have a unanimous consensus.
Okay.
So, and we've deleted. So, and we've deleted the no smoking in the parks tonight. This is from the departments.
No, I have, I'm planning on your second meeting of June, you should have a public works and a police report. So they should both be here this next meeting.
Importance and resolutions. None, any correspondence? City admin report.
Okay. I even begged the guy and told him I'd bring a generator and still no response from him, so I don't know if he's changed hands or what's going on with the old dump up there. Just keep trying. Um, pavers are scheduled to be here mid-June to the mid-July for the paving portion of the SCA grant. And then, as I stated last meeting, the chip sealing won't happen till around September. Interestingly enough though, Commissioner Garrett said that they're trying to use some grant funding they got to get the chip sealing equipment so that the county crew could start a chip sealing side arm. They're trying to get the zipper, which like goes in and grinds it and relays it as bedding material, you know that machine?
Oh, really?
And then the whole apparatus to do chip sealing. So maybe they'll be our chip sealer in the future, the county crew, you never know. Um, ODF docks for the lake, we've approved the design. Um, so the construction started, they're still aiming for late August or September for delivery. And we're gonna do one change order. Take the railings to them and have them drill all the plates. Because the other option was the dock shows up and one of our guys got to drill three hundred holes through the plates while everyone's staring at him and the dock's sitting on a low boy, and I said, nobody needs that, so we're gonna take the railings up and all the holes and apparatus will be brought with the docks um, in September, August, September. Um, ODOT will be back the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five season to construct the ramps. We're kind of in a holding pattern with the, remember, we had to set aside the twenty-two thousand dollars for the conflict work where our lids or valves or anything conflicted with the ramps. We got the agreement they want us to sign and they, the number went from twenty-two thousand to twenty-six thousand. And then it says, and this cost could go up. And I was like, we're not signing that because we don't sign anything with a not to exceed, we need a not to exceed. So Ruben's looking at the agreement, it also had some other weird requirements that somehow we'd be liable when this isn't even our project, so we're probably not gonna end up signing. But they didn't have enough time from when they go out to bid for the Department of Justice to amend our agreement. So we're looking on that, but we'll see how it goes. Um, north-south connection for Louisiana, the logging and stump removal is complete. Matt Peel out of Banks is the qualified low bidder. And as we stated, we're going to use the remaining fifteen, or remaining monies because they were the lowest bid to put in the water line. So we're just finalizing that and all the parts of that. And the connections, because they're gonna have to reconnect the homes that are connected there. We're going to require that every intersection has valves already in place. So no one's having to dig back and try and saddle the main after the fact, it will be done. And so we're hoping to finalize, um, and sign that by the end of this week. CDBG, so we held our pre-construction meeting on the Friday, the thirty-first. The contractor is free to begin as of Saturday. They really said they're gonna be mobilizing June seventeenth. So they'll be mobilizing their job shack, all their staging of piles, and they'll be starting at the headworks, working back towards us. Um, they're gonna be in Anderson Park, July one to August thirty-first, and all that in-water work. So their plan is to get, um, the pressure line back, the pump station installed, the other stuff diverted to the pump station, right, the existing stuff. Get all that closed up and then do the gravity up Adams, through Park Drive, up through Wellers to Springboard, and then they'll end up coming this way and coming down weed with the overflow in October, is his plan.
Josette, where are they gonna set up their, their shop, their?
The job shack?
Yeah.
We're looking at either the gravel lot by the Legion or the paved lot by the little, because there's not really, they don't need to be in the headworks, right? They're just hooking up to it and coming down Lagoon Way, attaching to the outside of the bridge, coming around the corner to Adams, the pump station's right by the Legion and the old substation, that's where the pump station is in that right-of-way there. So, yeah, he wanted his job shack to be kind of where, they didn't want to be at the sewer. He says his guys never like him when he puts his job shack where they eat their lunch by the poop lagoons. He's never the good boss, so he wants it not in the sewer lagoons. They'll stage stuff behind the gates.
Florida.
Yes, Mike Lighta. Um, and so Sheila was there as the Public Works Committee representative, she asked a lot of good questions. And so she'll be go, coming to all the bi-monthly meetings like George did, asking questions on the committee's behalf, kind of being the third set of eyes. Um, but yeah, everything seems to be going good with that. Uh, we still haven't got the draft permit from DEQ. We got them all the data, we're just in the holding pattern. Um, and then I do have the electrical estimate for putting electricity at the food cart court, the revisit of years ago idea. Um, I'm still waiting for Wes Dorgan's estimate, but we did meet on-site and talked about everything we'd want to do and get this. And that's all I got, we're closed Wednesday, the nineteenth for Juneteenth and July fourth for Independence Day. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Not a question, but I'll add that, we gotta save the date for the city-county dinner on July ninth.
Oh, right, it's a class, can I?
Columbia City.
Columbia City.
Make that one, because my son's coming in from Texas right there.
Can I ask the city administrator a question about the SCA ODOT grant? Can you tell me which streets we're paving this year?
Dang it.
Oh.
Maybe, hold on, I don't have it in here or in my head.
T N F.
Yeah, if you want to email me tomorrow.
Yeah, I could email you the whole report. Like the paint, the maps and just, we have it in the document, I just don't have it on my phone, okay. I, I believe there's a number of tree streets that are getting chip sealed.
Yeah.
Right, because we know we have a water project there in the future and we don't want to put asphalt. But then there's some kind of higher-up letter streets in town that are getting paved, but I'll send you the.
Okay, I'll have to send you a reminder tomorrow.
Okay.
Go to print tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, yeah.
I'd like to include that. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody, any other questions?
Date of the dinner?
July ninth.
July ninth?
Six.
I just saw that email today and I think it's at the.
I mean, it is.
In Columbia.
Ooh, that, yeah, I think, it's like, it's like their.
Citytown Hall.
Yeah, it's like their community room, big building.
Long river there, yeah. Okay, thank you, Josette.
Sure.
Any items from the concert? Okay, I have.
Lake is full. Lake is full. Lake full. Yeah, after the storm. I've been only running one or two pumps to kind of keep it up there. It seems to be holding really well. Still brushing on the trees and fortunately with rain, brush grows too. I want those trees to grow faster. Yeah, there's about, between them and Aura and some of the watershed council put in, I'm probably about fifteen hundred trees in them.
Well, at least where watershed put them in out on that lot by Sharice's, Wayne's doing a great job going around every tree.
Yeah, my husband is like stoked every time they come by, he's like, I, I think they're competing, it's getting better and better. I was like, they're not competing, and then it turns out they are.
It'd be Wayne or Jonathan, whoever's doing it.
It's like right around them.
Right, really close, so every little tree's just like, ooh, looks pretty good.
Yeah, Jonathan did mow on the ones on Webway, got in there and got in behind some of them. And just as I pulled up, because it was, I, I come down to, I think I came down with the weed whacker to whack around them and and just as I pulled up, he bumped one, knocked one over.
Like dang it.
I seen that. Didn't hurt nothing. But, yeah, and then I see Tim made his rounds around the lake, looked pretty good, but of course, he's probably cussing this rain too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're.
It's like, it.
It's time of year.
It's hard because you, you're chasing the grass now. Once the sun comes out, everything's just gonna be going.
Yeah.
I guess I have one question, it looks like after the rains subside after tomorrow, the river level ought to go down the next week or two. Uh, any plans after school's out of putting up the dam?
Yeah, we figure we gotta get to like thirty-five as the big feet per second, like when it's halfway.
Today, but.
Yeah. So we just keep, we, the guys are just paying attention to it. And hopefully they won't do it until school's out so that they don't entice any kids to skip. That'll be the end of next week, right? They get out on the thirteenth?
On the thirteenth, Thursday.
Oh, yeah. I think it's thirteenth.
Anytime after that.
Yeah. When we can get the truck in and out, we'll get it done.
It's gonna be a pretty bare riverbed in order for them to get in there.
Yeah.
Without flooding the truck by the time they get out.
It'd probably be.
Just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah.
That time of year.
That's what we're planning.
Yeah.
I haven't, I tried to push real hard last year with contacting the school about lifeguards and talked to several people and gave them all the information, but you can lead a horse to water, but you know, make them drink. So I haven't heard anything from anybody, so.
Yeah.
It's like we're not gonna have another lifeguard again, so.
Yeah, it's hard to get them the cla, through the class and then the interest. Because they don't want to spend their whole summer, they want, it'd be great if you had a crew of like four kids.
Of course Grove Aquatic Center was very receptive.
Yeah, hosting and teaching.
Our need though, too, so like I said, you can lead a horse.
I know.
You need those Roberts kids, kids to start growing up.
I know.
And to be old enough to, to do it.
Right. What, Desi and Brittany need some kids.
Right, they have some kids.
Oh, do they? I don't know. Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
Where it's ten years off.
Or the ones that live right there, the Smiths.
Yeah, you could get, one of those boys can do it, they're the oldest one.
Yeah, Bo, Bo.
Yeah.
That's all I had, so. I guess we're ready for an action item summary, Josette.
Okay, um, so staff's awaiting the sidewalk connectivity plan that count, that the Public Works Committee wants us to take to council. And Ben's working on the streets inventory plan. Um, we've moved the Healthy Parks Initiative and the committee to the first meeting of July. I'm gonna find out what we said about the daily parking fee. And send Scott the streets report. Anything I missed? All right.
Okay, thank you for attending this evening and I'll adjourn this meeting at seven forty-six PM, meeting adjourned.